All right, before we start tonight's meeting, I'll call on Councilman Larry Hendry, then please follow me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for bringing us all here together this evening, getting us through our day safe and sound. We'd like to ask you to continue to bestow your blessings upon us, our city, families and loved ones. Also, continue to watch over our servicemen and women here locally and abroad. We also would want to give a special prayer to those affected in the tragedy in Washington DC today. In your name we pray, amen.
Welcome to City Hall. This is our regular meeting of September 16th, and also a special hearing tonight on our conference center. I would ask the clerk to roll, please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussy?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Alrighty, next on the agenda, if we could have Ms. Katie Winkler come forward, please. Katie, welcome.
Hello.
As you guys may know, from time to time, we do have proclamations, and whereas it is the privilege and the duty of the American people to celebrate the 226th anniversary of the drafting of our Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designing September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Eric J. Strumpf, Mayor of the City of Jefferson and the City of Missouri, do hereby proclaim this week as Constitution Week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you tell us why you're here tonight in particular?
Sure. I am Chairman of the Constitution Week Committee for the Jane Randolph-Jefferson Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. So, as part of our committee and part of our group, we like to promote the Constitution and what it means to citizens of the United States.
Great. Well, thank you. You can come up and get your proclamation for this year. No, by all means. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate it. All right, and next on depth, we have our public hearings here under number four, and for that, I will call on our Assistant Counselor, Jeremy Cover.
Yes, sir. Tonight begins Phase 1 of the public comments on the conference center. Tonight, the comments are to be focused on desirability of one proposal over the other, including location, facilities the public would like to have in a conference center, amount of subsidy, if any, which should be provided to the conference center beyond the $9 million offered in the RFP, and the desirability of providing city financed parking at either location. Tonight, the comments are to be limited to three minutes each for a total of 45 minutes. That's given the nature of the other things on the agenda. However, there will be other public hearings on September 19th and September 23rd. And I think they'll be keeping the clock, and whenever you want to start, based on the list that the clerk has.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. First on our agenda tonight, it's an honor to welcome former Mayor John Landware back to our chambers. John, welcome. And also, we would also want to welcome former First Lady. But I think, once a First Lady, always a First Lady, kind of like a mayor, right?
I think that's right.
That's right. John, welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to go fast, and I'm even going to read a little bit, because three minutes is not very long. But I've given Phyllis copies of my remarks, if you want to review them later, and I hope you do. First of all, thank you for your service. You're spending a lot of time and effort on this project, because it's probably the biggest decision you'll make as a city council and as a mayor. Be patient. If it was easy, it would have happened a long time ago. It's important to remember the evolution of the project. It's not something you started last year with a blank slate. Over 10 years ago, the city bought land and tore down buildings to assemble the almost complete block we called the Housing Authority Site. The rationale for those taxpayer expenditures was to create a site for a conference center or conference center related uses such as parking. When the old state health lab was demolished, city leaders obtained commitments from state leaders that the parcel would be made available for a conference center project in a cooperative effort. In 2010, Commissioner Calvin Simmons told us in writing that the state would work with the city, and I believe that is still the case. It's also important to remember the reason why you're here at all and able to talk about a conference center is because in 2010, the voters passed an increase in the lodging tax for that purpose. Passing a tax is not easy, and this measure was approved by a 12% margin. So if someone suggests that the community does not support a conference center, they're just wrong. The community has spoken. On that note, keep in mind, when the community voted in favor of a conference center, they were shown a downtown location. In my opinion, the tax would not have passed if there had not been a location indicated, or if the location was other than downtown. So as you think about location, you have this long history of what your predecessors have done to move the project forward, and you are aware of what the community has told you at the polls. But you've also done your own homework. The downtown location was one of the two sites you appropriately listed as preferred at the time of the RFP. Drury Hotels, perhaps the most knowledgeable developer who has looked at the project, told you in their May 31st letter that the downtown site was, in their opinion, quote, "the most viable option." More recently, in the course of the updated market study, the downtown site was preferred by meeting planners almost 2 to 1. And your independent consultant has reaffirmed that a downtown location, I think the words he used, correct me if I'm wrong, was best for the long-term benefit of the city. All of this should come as no surprise. You don't have to be a consultant or a meeting planner to know that the one thing Jefferson City has that other cities do not have is a Capitol building, and all the jobs and energy that come along with it. To be successful, our one conference center should plug into that, should plug into that energy directly, and not remotely. My message to you is, don't ignore the data, and don't do something that's easy and quick, and call it a success. Work hard on the preferred location. If it won't work now, look for ways to make it work in the future. Don't spend $9 million of taxpayer money on a secondary location just because it's easier and faster. And for goodness sakes, don't build something that is about the same as what we have now, or maybe just a little bigger. That would be a waste of taxpayer money and unfairly compete with existing venues. Finally, I am concerned at times that it seems that the two challenges with the downtown location, namely parking and site acquisition, are depicted as the developers' challenges. In fact, they are your challenges. No developer is going to absorb the cost of the parking structure, and no developer can be expected to negotiate with the Office of Administration without your participation in leadership. The good news is that you have money in your parking fund that can be used for no other purpose. Leverage those funds. And the State of Missouri is a willing partner. The state itself will derive significant savings by having a conference center adjacent to the Capitol complex. Accept the state's invitation to work on this together. It will not be easy, but you can make it happen. Maybe not right away, but gradually, these challenges can be overcome, and we can have a right-sized conference center at the right location where it will truly invigorate and energize our city. Thanks for your time, and thanks for your hard work.
John, thank you for all you've done in the past. Appreciate it a great deal. Let's give John a round of applause. As everyone knows, being mayor for eight years and getting us to this point, we're very proud of that, of that work. Next, we have Mr. Glenn Castalas. Glenn, welcome back. Yes, sir.
So tonight, we're just listening to the constituents and their, whatever, we're just listening tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And actually, not only are we listening, but also the developers, which we have some developers here, all our developers here. I know, I see the farmer group in the back. And also, our facilitator, I understand, will be getting a copy of this also, too.
I think Mr. Probst is over there, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's Mr. Probst. Behind Chief. Hey, Trey. Glenn, it's all yours, sir.
Good evening. Glenn Castalas, 1904 V. During the city's recent medals-by-the-club annexation attempt, the city's mantra, used by some of you, was to level the playing field. How does subsidizing one business over another level the playing field? During these forums, you will probably hear evidence shows or research shows from some individuals. Jurisprudence on your part would be to disregard any speaker that does not, I repeat, does not provide the source of their information. Now, I wish to speak about legacies. A very recent University of Missouri study shows that more Missourians than ever are going hungry. The study showed that in Cole County, 9% of all households and 14.2% of households with children were uncertain about where their next meal would come from. While these numbers are below the state average, they are indicative of tough financial times. Numerous people work just to provide for their family's basic needs, hoping, often against all odds, they can save a little for special occasions and emergencies. Many people die, leaving very little behind for their families, other than memories. Those people on the other end of the spectrum often give either their time or money to support causes they believe are worthwhile. They deserve praise, although most don't seek or want public adulation. Then there are those folks that want to leave a legacy behind by having their name attached to some public entity, such as a building, park, conservation reserve, library, or athletic venue. Hopefully, they have donated their private money for such an endeavor. People like yourselves, serving as elected or appointed officials, should strive for leaving the greatest legacy you possibly can. That is accomplished not by building or subsidizing something at taxpayer expense, but rather leaving the public entity in which you serve in a stronger and more secure financial position than which you found it. And that ends my speech for this evening.
Glenn, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate you taking the time. Next, I have on here Mr. David Wallace. Welcome, David. You wanted to say stumpy, didn't you?
No, I wouldn't do that. Not with your position, sir, nor address any of the other city councilmen, as I used to at Moen-Waldos. I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Mayor Landware addressed, and that is my concern that we go forward with this project, but it be a right-sized project. In looking at the proposals on the table, Earhart comes closest to what might work, but in my experience, might doesn't always work. You know, when I'm looking at the competitors in this marketplace, and that's one thing I've not heard anybody really address, is who are we competing with here? You have to look at Columbia, and you have to look at the properties at the Lake of the Ozarks. And I know it's hard to compare us to the Lake of the Ozarks properties, but when you're starting to look at square footage, and what you have the potential of trying to draw in, I think it's important. You know, right now, the Executive Center in Columbia has approximately 35,000 square feet of meeting space. Their main hall is 18,000 plus. They've got a junior ballroom about 8,000, and then they've got eight breakouts of about 6,000 to 7,000 square feet, okay? That's the nearest competitor. When you look at the Lodge, you know, they become the next potential person that we could steal business from, and they've got a total of around 51,000 square feet. Their exhibit hall is about 20,000. They've got the Grenada Ballroom, which is almost 11,000. They've got the Marabella, which is about 7,300, and they've got 10 breakout rooms with almost 13,000 square feet of additional space. Then, of course, when we come to Tantera, that's, that's a monster in itself. They've got almost 89,000 square feet of exhibit space. Their ballroom's over 23,000, and their exhibit hall's 30,000. Plus, then they have 24 additional breakout rooms. So it's, it's going to be hard to compete there, but I know the business that goes there. And I know that if there's a right-sized facility here, priced right, that we have an opportunity to possibly steal some of that business. Again, when I look at the proposals that are on the table right now, you know, we're talking proposals 30,000 to 40,000 square feet, ballroom space 15,000 square feet possibly, 20,000 is, is getting closer to acceptable. But you know, Capitol Plaza has almost 23,000 square feet of function space already. So to accept something just to get a project done, and say we have a convention center, I don't think is the right thing to do. Because all you're going to do if it's not right-sized is you're going to move business around in Jefferson City. You're going to take from Peter to pay Paul, and we're really not going to see the true increase in business that we want to see in our community. So, I just ask for due diligence and making sure that the decision's for the right-sized facility to benefit our community, and not just do it to get it done. Thank you.
David, thank you for your time. Next, I have on the list Tim Stallman. Tim, welcome.
My name's Tim Stallman. I live at 2204 Melody Drive. I would like to make three quick points about the convention center. One, building a convention center is a huge monetary undertaking involving not just millions of dollars, but committing future generations to funding subsidies for years to come. Two, this center will cause existing hotels to lose business to the convention center, possibly putting them out of business. Will you subsidize their losses as you subsidize the convention center? Where will that money come from? Three, where is the money going to come from for these yearly subsidies? From general revenue? I am here tonight to ask the city council to put the matter of a convention center to the vote, to a vote of the people. Economic times have changed since 2010. What harm is there in asking for voter approval of this massive outlay of millions of dollars? I think that, I think that the council would want to make sure that the taxpayers and citizens are on board with this spending. Or is the council afraid that a vote, vote on the convention center will lose by the same margin that the ill-fated transformation sales tax failed? The council seems more interested in the welfare of the downtown business community than in the interests of the taxpayers. Let's put this matter to a vote of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stallman. Next, I have Don Trebeu. Is that correct? How you doing, sir? Welcome back. Thanks for being here, Don.
Thank you. I'm Don Trebeu, 4710 Denise Drive. That's, yeah, that's out near the vicinity of the mall. I like to shop at the mall. That is not the place for a convention center. The convention center should be located on the downtown property that I'm going to say is adjacent to the Capitol Plaza. It's within reasonable walking dis, if they build a convention center there, it's within reasonable walking distance of three other hotels that can help in any overflow. It's, build a mall location, there's no hotels within reasonable walking distance. As an example, okay, the downtown location would offer you the opportunity to allow that developer to build a smaller hotel. They have hotels around that can take care of the overflow. This allows for more money to be spent on the convention center itself. That's not available at the mall. Thusly, the downtown center is within walking distance of many of our state offices. Having been a retired state employee and traveled to conferences and other locations, the state government could save considerable money by having a conference center within walking distance of many of its employees that would attend a conference center. Example of convenience is, if there's two people travel together, they can be staying in a motel, conference center motel, or a motel in the general area. One of them starts feeling bad and needs to go back to the room, the other does not have to get up and say, "I gotta take you there, because we've got to drive." They can walk reasonably to their motel, hotel, whether it's an adjacent one or the one with the center. I think, along with size, I am concerned, like I think some other people have been. I think we need to design for the future beyond what we think we need right now. I'm saying, design a conference center for 50,000, 60,000 square feet. Design it in such a manner that you can build the part that you can afford now, but as times get better, as it grows, you have the substructure that you can build up on and not have to spend a lot of money to add to. This is very important. It saves taxpayer money. I think we need to build now a minimum of a 30,000 square foot conference center. Right now, as I've heard said, I thought it was different, but Capitol Plaza has 13,000 to 15,000 square foot. Why are we building another Capitol Plaza? We want to build something big enough that people can come to. I think one thing that people are missing, they're saying that the City of Jefferson City is paying for this conference center. Sorry, people, the lodging tax is paid for people outside of Jeff City. We are not mostly paying for that, only if we subsidize it, or is it coming out of our pockets. It's coming out of the people that need a place to go to, a place large enough they can meet. They are willing to play, pay for this place large enough to meet. They will come to our city. Not only will they make it efficient and livable, they'll bring taxes into our community. This would offset any subsidy that the city might have to provide. You bring the taxes in, the businesses flourish. Will it hurt other hotels? No. Not especially if you go at the downtown location that allows them to make their hotel smaller. Parking. Parking is an issue. It's an issue at both locations. Do I like for the city to subsidize parking? No. But on the other hand, we have a fund for a parking garage. That fund could be partially used to build a hope mo, sorry, build a parking garage in the general location. It could be rented out and used to help parking in the downtown area. At the mall, I'm sorry, we don't need to subsidize a parking, because it's only going to help one facility. It is not going to help the city as a whole. Another way on the parking, very reasonable way, is the general area is lower than Highway 50. That's kind of a datum that you look at and say, "Hey, it's pleasing to have everything above your street that you're adjacent to." Go into that area, and go one or two levels below 50. Build a parking garage under the whole lot. Build the conference center up on this. Build the hotel up on it. Your parking is there. It's reasonably priced if it's built and spread out to where you can get into. But I think most of all, plan ahead. Try to build what we'll need 30, 40, I mean, try to design what we'll need 30 or 40 years from now. Build what we can afford, in such a way that we can build more later. Thank you.
Don, thank you.
I'd like to, I'm sorry. I'd like to remind the audience that we are limiting the comments to three minutes tonight, that way in order to get to the whole, through the whole meeting. But again, we'll have two more meetings after this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next, I have Roger Wise. Good evening, Roger, and thank you for being here.
Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm Roger Wise, 930 Manassas Place. A lot of my comments have already been addressed with respect to size. Build it big enough for the future. Don't build it for yesterday, build it for the future. Number two, subsidy. People ask, "Well, we're going to pay for it." Well, you've got a lodging tax. People are going to come to town. They're going to spend money at restaurants. They're going to spend money at buying things. I have no, I'm not an expert. I have no idea how much that could generate. But interesting to note, Columbia said belonging to the SEC is going to bring $118 million into their community. How much might this bring into our community in addition to the lodging tax? Now, we talk about a convention center. Let's talk about something that's more than just conventions, conferences, car shows, antique shows, antique road show, basketball games, concerts of all kinds. My hometown, Salina, Kansas, has had one of these since 1976. It's not downtown, it's in a park, in a city park. They draw all kinds of people to this particular facility. And it's been there since 19, it's called the Bicentennial Center, as a matter of fact. City does subsidize it occasionally, as needed, but I don't see a particular problem with that if it's offset by additional revenue through taxes, through meals, buying things here, and so on. Last thing, location. Ideally, yeah, it'd be nice to be downtown. I'm not an expert. I'll tell you this much. For 19 years, I was Executive Director of a large association in this town. This town was not big enough to hold my annual meeting. I took it to the Lake, Kansas City, or St. Louis, because it wasn't big enough to hold us. And there are a lot of other organizations in town that would have their meetings here if it was bigger. And basically, because a lot of times, the state capital is a draw for people. You can invite, if you hold your meeting during the legislative session, you can have functions, invite them over, and so on. So, let us, let's go forward. We're not going forward. This city is not going forward. There's so much negativity in this town, and you see it in the newspaper articles, you hear it on the radio, you hear it a lot of different places. And that's not helping us. Negativity in this town is not helping us grow. And if we don't grow, we're going to slowly die. Thank you.
Roger, thank you for being here this evening. Next, we have Mr. Leonard Steiman. Welcome, Leonard.
Leonard Steiman, 110 North Lincoln. As a national representative for disabled American veterans, I've been around a lot of places. Plus, I have been an executive chef for Marriott Corporation in Maui. I opened up the first one outside of the United States as the executive chef. Now, I know what size mean, and I know what location means. If you have the wrong location, you just might as well just throw it out the door, because location, location, location is the main thing you learn in business. McCarty Street location is the best place to go, because you've got five major hotels there. A lot of people don't like staying in the convention center hotels, because they're a little bit more expensive, and they go to the other ones. I know this by experience. We just come back from Orlando. We've been to Denver. We've been to Las Vegas as a national representative. If you want to build it, build it big. If you don't want to build it, build it small. But don't, don't take it out to Capitol Mall where they have outdoor car lots twice a year, maybe once a year. I don't know how many times they do. It just irritates me when they fly all them balloons around. I don't want to buy their cars. But parking is a situation down, down there on McCarty Street. I've looked at it many, many, many times. Plaza Hotel has problems, and we have a state convention there every year. And this year, we had a flood problem. They put parking garages under the ground in a place that's a floodplain. We have to build that up four feet higher than what a 100-year flood should be in order to start parking. Let's do three tiers of parking, and put parking meters in those parking spaces. And if the people are there for the convention, you give them a tag, just like you do in the parking garage. That way, our trolley, our trolley system, we have a, a trolley system, it's a pretty good trolley system in Jefferson City. It works really good. And our downtown, and our state offices, and our museums are the best there is kept. And if we, as ambassadors, and every one of us is ambassadors of Cole County, Jefferson City, we as ambassadors would, would incorporate our visitors into what we have in Jefferson City, Cole County, and State of Missouri. That's what we have to do, and that's what I do all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard, for being here tonight. Next, we have Mr. Vic Purie. Welcome, Vic.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this short.
I'll try to keep this short and to the point and try to stay on task. My name is Vic Pury. I'm the executive vice president and general counsel for the Pury Group of Enterprises. We own five hundred and thirty-five rooms in Jefferson City. Uh, so you could say the worst that would benefit the most from this situation would be myself. However, addressing the proposals that have been on the table, I suggest a united proposal makes the mark. A lot of people in this council have said that if it's not the rise size, if it's not what we've wanted in an RFP, then we would not accept it. And now, we're looking for reasons to accept what's on the table. I kind of say, like my grandfather did, if the fish isn't big enough, throw it back in the lake, son. You don't want it. So I'd encourage you guys to do the same thing. The other thing that I would look at here also is the subsidy situation. I think a lot of people have made a very good point in this, that you're basically, based upon the statistics that have come out in the most recent report, there's a minimum of three hundred thousand dollar loss that's going to come down on this conference center for a minimum of the first ten years. You're just, you just agreed, if we do a subsidies, to subsidize three million dollars on this project, aside from the nine million that you're going to be giving for it. Now, you know, everybody says that the Capitol Plaza, the downtown side, et cetera. Look, if you want to do it for the future, the downtown isn't going to cut it because there's no room for expansion for you. Unfortunately, I do agree that the Capitol Plaza is too, or the Capitol Mall is too far out, and it's probably not a good choice for us to do this situation. But I think we have great responsibility as members that have been tasked with the responsibility of spending the taxpayers' money, hard-earned money that has been collected, to spend it in a very wise manner. Not to spend it just because we don't have anything better on the table. We can wait. We were always told, at least my grandfather always told me, he said, Vic, waiting for the fruit to ripen and plucking it when it's just ripe will make it that much sweeter. Don't do it for the sake of just doing it, or it's there, and it's the only thing that's within reach. Sometimes, to get what you want, you have to work harder. It's kind of like diving for pearls. You can see them from the upper part of the ocean. When you're in a boat, you look down, you see the clams, you see them. But to get to the pearls, you have to dive deep, and you have to work hard to get them. That's the same thing here that you have, guys have. So I encourage you to look everything through economically and say, is this what we wanted? A lot of you said, no subsidy, and that's a red line. Well, now's your opportunity to hold to your red line. Now's the time for you guys to step forward and show to the community that it's not about just fulfilling something that we've wanted to fulfill. It's about wisely spending the money that they have entrusted you with. That you drew that line, and you're going to stand behind it. Don't walk away from it. Let the federal government walk away from all the red lines it wants to. Let's not, let's do it here in Jeff City. When you agreed to do something on an RFP, if you don't have what you wanted in that RFP in the submittal, then it is your duty as individuals entrusted by the public to say no and to re-put it out there to see if there's something better available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pury. Uh, next we have former councilman, Mr. Lynn Stella. Lynn, thank you for being here this evening.
Leonard Stella, three forty-five Ladue Road, Jefferson City. Uh, I've listened to the proposals, and I've listened to, uh, former councilman, councilman with myself and one of our finest mayors make a good offer or a proposal for the downtown location. I hate to disagree with them, but that's what I'm going to do. Uh, I tried to look at both and, and also to look at it from the point of view of people coming here and pleasing them rather than what we think is good for us. Try to look at it from a customer's point of view. One of the reasons that I prefer the mall location, and this is going on the assumption, these are the three locations that have been offered, and going also on the assumption that this proposal will pass. But the, looking at it in terms of entry and egress, uh, and these are people who are going to come to town from all over the state for conventions, if they're going to come here, that it would be a much easier venue if they would come to that mall location with much cheaper modifications. A, the parking garage would, and the cost of it would be virtually eliminated, or pretty much, uh, have you gotten any numbers on that specifically lately? The cost of not building a garage as opposed to building one? Well, you can throw that into the plus side of the, of the tail. With all that said, I do agree with, starting with a larger facility. And I've always heard, I've built three restaurants, and I've operated a half a dozen. I've always heard that bricks and mortar is the cheapest, uh, investment that you'll have in any operation that you're going to have. If you make it a little bit bigger, it isn't going to hurt things if it's a little bit bigger, other than the original cost of the bricks and mortar. Uh, the, uh, so I do agree with the proposal of having a facility that's large enough to attract those conventions that are not coming here now. I still like the mall location, and I think a lot can be done with it. And who's to say that in fifteen to twenty years, that won't be the center of the area around here? As opposed to the downtown facility, which is always here, and we will always have. That's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Stella, thank you for being here tonight. Okay, that wraps up this portion of tonight's hearing on our conference center. Jeremy, can you please tell us when we will be having another one of these, time and location, please?
Yes, the second hearing will be September nineteenth at noon, uh, in city, here at City Hall. And the third hearing will be September twenty-third at five thirty PM, also at City Hall.
All right. Jeremy, thank you. We'll be moving on to number five, minutes and reports filed here at City Hall. Campo Technical Committee, the Environmental Quality Commission, and Historic Preservation Commission, all have been filed here. If you would like to join one of our boards or commissions, you can contact our HR Director, Gail Strope, or you can also go to our website, which is jeffcitymo.org. Next, we'll go into council committee reports. And first is the admin committee, uh, which is chaired by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll. Carrie?
Thank you. The administration committee will meet Wednesday, October second, at eight AM across the hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Next, we have the finance committee, which is chaired by Mr. Sean Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor. The next finance committee meeting is next Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, seven thirty AM in the morning across the hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have public safety chaired by Mr. Rick Prather.
The next public safety meeting will be Thursday, October third, across the hall after the brown bagel.
Thank you, Rick. Next, public works and planning chaired by Councilman Bob Scribner. Bob?
I'm going to follow the, the pattern set by everyone else, and I'm just, we have a very long agenda, so I'm not going to read it. Uh, our meeting will be Thursday, September nineteenth, which is this Thursday at seven thirty AM across the hall.
Thank you. And next, I think we have a liaison report. Rick Mahalovich has asked that, uh, Gail Strope give us a update of a very fun event that took place Friday night.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to be able to talk a little bit about the Sip and Sit fundraiser event that was held on Friday night downtown on High Street. The Cultural Arts Commission and the Cultural Arts Foundation members all put, worked very hard on this fundraiser, is primarily led through the efforts of Lucia Kinslow and Cindy Layton. So I'd specifically like to point them out because the two of them put a lot of work into the event. But they had about two hundred participants. It also included a silent auction of hand-painted rocking chairs, um, which they raised about fifteen hundred dollars just on the silent auction. Total fundraising, I don't have the exact figures because I, I think they have some invoices to come in and some more pre-sales ticket money to come in, but looking at about between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars that was raised by this, these two groups for future art projects in our community.
Great. Gail, thank you very much for your help. I know you were there, and I think your family was there too, so we really do appreciate that. Uh, next, nothing under number eight, and I believe under number nine, Nathan has something to mention under announcements. Nathan?
Yes, I just wanted to let the council know that we have deployed, uh, the federal government has deployed two of our firefighters to Colorado. They're part of Task Force One, and they're very highly trained and, uh, just, we're sending out to you guys reports about what their activities are out there. Appears that the situation out there is pretty bad, um, but keep them in your thoughts.
Thank you, Nathan. Any other council announcements to make this evening? All right, seeing none. Moving on to number ten, I have Mr. Jack Platts signed up. And Jack, I understand that it looks like you brought your bodyguards with you. If you could please, uh, give us an introduction of those fine gentlemen, too.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Ed Farnsworth is our CEO. Martin Grabinski is our director of building facilities.
Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jack Platts. I'm the board chair of the Capital Region Medical Center, here to speak in favor of bill number twenty thirteen dash seventy-one. We appreciate your consideration of the development agreement on Capital Region's expansion project. As you know, Capital Region Medical Center is, um, planning an expansion of its main facility by approximately one hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, which will make it about a third larger at a cost of about thirty-five million dollars. This is being done in order to meet the growing need for outpatient services in our area. Given recent trends, um, which have seen a downturn in inpatient services and an uptick in outpatient services, we are going to be adding outpatient service areas and medical office space adjacent to our current building. The project will also improve access, not only within the building because of a new entrance to the entire complex off of Madison Street, but also improve access to the hospital in the area if this ordinance is adopted. It proposes to make two-way up to Woodlawn, Monroe, which will make that a, a very useful secondary access point to the hospital. It would allow, um, better entrances on Madison, and then hopefully, it will improve the intersection at Monroe and Stadium. We believe the project will be beneficial to the health of Jefferson City community and to our entire service area, and we would ask that you approve the bill and appreciate your consideration of it. We think it'll add up to a hundred new jobs to Jeff City.
Jack, thank you for being here. Ed, Mr. Martin, thank you very much also. Uh, any questions of our presenter this evening, by council members? All right, gentlemen, thank you once again for being here. Uh, next, we have the consent agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to take up the consent agenda as printed. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, discussion. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. Roll call, please. Actually, we're going to, we're going to replay that, uh, cut that JCTV. We're going to replay that, and we're going to go for a voice vote because it's easier to do. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, no bids tonight under, or over fifty thousand dollars. Bill's introduced. We'll have first reading of bill twenty thirteen seventy-four, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Aplex Incorporated for the Ash Street CDBG project.
Mr. Rash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll also point out that, uh, this bill has a checkmark by it noting that, uh, request for suspension of the rules. But, uh, just to-
Mr. Scribner, is that, is that your intention, sir, as the sponsor? Okay. Anyone on the council that would, uh, oppose suspending the rules? If two or more do, we would not have suspension tonight. Seeing none, the rules are officially suspended. Matt?
Thank you. The, uh, the project, the, the, this is a construction contract with Aplex, uh, to construct new curb and gutter and sidewalk along Ash Street in the area. You may know it more, one of the adjacent businesses is Prison Brew's there in that block. The, um, the total contract value is just over fifty-seven thousand dollars, and is in line with the engineer's estimate of, uh, approximately fifty-nine thousand. Eight bids were received for the project, and this is the lowest bid. We'd recommend approval.
Any questions of, uh, staff tonight on this bill? Mr. Bray?
Uh, Matt, the funds for the project?
Uh, this would be a hundred percent funded by community development block grant funds, a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Any follow-up? Any other questions, uh, down third base? Uh, Mr. Scribner?
Uh, just so the, the folks at home are aware, the reason we're, uh, asking to suspend the rules and vote on this tonight is because of the construction season. We'd like to get that started and completed during, uh, this year's, or this fall's construction season. It'll give us an extra couple of weeks.
Okay. Uh, any debate on twenty thirteen seventy-four? Before we go into debate, we'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Aplex Incorporated for the Ash Street CDBG project.
All right, now debate on twenty thirteen seventy-four. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scribner?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have, uh, first reading of twenty thirteen seventy-five, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Loggie Ridge subdivision, section two, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Matt? I'm sorry, Janice, my bad.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Bill to advance the slide for me. Thank you. Loggie Ridge subdivision, as you know, is on the north side of Route C, about a thousand feet east of Beath Drive. Uh, this particular section of the subdivision consists of twenty-seven lots on fifteen acres. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this final plat at their meeting in August. The total subdivision includes fifty-six lots in both sections. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Janice, on twenty thirteen seventy-five? How was this passed out of P and Z? Any issues at all with neighbors or?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff on twenty thirteen seventy-five? Seeing none, we'll have first reading of twenty thirteen seventy-six, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending section nineteen four oh one, motor vehicles and traffic, Schedule J, parking prohibited. Subparagraph A, streets and highways of the code of the city of Jefferson pertaining to Trenton Court and Tanman Court located in Loggie Ridge subdivision, section two.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you. This bill would regulate the on-street parking on, um, in Loggie Ridge subdivision, section two. Two streets are included in this section, Trenton Court and Tanman Court. The, um, parking that was proposed by the developer would be allowed on the north side of Trenton and on the west side of Tanman Court. So this bill approves the parking plan, um, proposed by the developer.
Okay. Any questions of, uh, staff on twenty thirteen seventy-five? Yes, on seventy-six. Seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, first reading of twenty thirteen seventy-seven, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Mr. Betts? Welcome back, sir.
Yes, thank you. This is, uh, we already did our large surplus for the year. We have two more pieces of equipment we needed to add. Uh, one of them is a two thousand and ten Crown Victoria. Um, we're going to switch out one of the police cars that we initially had on the list with the one that's in your packet here. Um, and the other thing is the UPS. It's a backup power supply. Uh, it started to fail and having battery issues, so we've did an emergency replacement on that. Uh, so we have the old one, but we have to declare it surplus before we can, uh, properly dispose of it.
Any questions of staff on twenty thirteen seventy-seven? All right, seeing none, we'll have first reading of twenty thirteen seventy-eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Jefferson City Hangar Association Incorporated for a ground lease at Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As clerk indicated, this is a ground lease at the airport for a hangar that we term, I believe, the South Hangar. It's close to the wastewater treatment plant. And, uh, if you want to look, look where it's at. But, uh, basically, it's a twenty-year lease. Uh, it's been much discussed at the Public Works and Planning Committee level. And, uh, starts out with three thousand dollars a year for the first five years, and then it has a ten percent adjustment each five-year period. And, uh, we'd recommend approval.
Any questions on twenty thirteen seventy-eight by the council, the staff? Seeing none? Seeing none, we'll move on to bills pending. Uh, first one here is 2013-65, third reading, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by amending the traffic schedules.
Matt?
Thank you again. The, um, this, uh, this particular ordinance would add a, a space on the 200 block of Monroe Street for the purpose of, uh, having the juvenile officer park there. There's already two spaces there marked that way. Uh, apparently there was some confusion when it was originally passed and it should've been three, and this would clarify that.
Any questions for Matt on 2013-65? Seeing none, council debate? Seeing none, roll call please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next we'll move on to third reading of 2013, 2013-66.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with Capitol Mall JC LLC.
Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill authorizes the city to sign a development agreement with the owners of Capitol Mall. As you're aware, the new owners are in the process of evaluating, evaluating various economic development tools to redevelop, update and improve the mall. One of the economic development tools being proposed is the creation of a community improvement district in cooperation with the city. The process of creating this CID requires conveying title of multiple mall tracts to wholly-owned subsidiaries of the developer. Ordinarily, the creation of these tracts requires a submission of a subdivision plat and, um, that goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then comes to the council. But since this is an interim step, the staff recommended this development agreement that would allow the transfer of these tracts, uh, at this time, and then a subdivision plat would be submitted at a later date.
Any questions of staff on 2013-66? Any debate by council or questions or debate within yourselves? Seeing none, roll call please.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have third reading of 23, or excuse me, 2013-68.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending section 19401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule V Disabled Parking Spaces of the Code of the City of Jefferson by the addition of a disabled parking space on a portion of the 800 block of Mulberry Street.
Matt, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As clerk indicated, this would just add one ADA space on 800 block of Mulberry Street. This request went through the TNT, uh, commission. And, uh, typically what we do is if, uh, this, a request like this, the requestor would have to see to it that a ramp, a proper ramp was installed, that's been done, and then we'd follow up with an ordinance. We'd recommend approval.
Any questions on 68? Seeing none, roll call please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll have third reading of 2013-69.
An ordinance amending chapter 22 Parking, Stopping and Standing and chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to snow priority and emergency area routes.
Matt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This basically, as clerk indicated, broadens the definition of snow routes to include emergency routes. This came about after last year's action, after-action reports of, uh, snow events. We'd recommend approval.
Any questions for Matt? Debate by council? Roll call please.
Henry?
Aye.